...is to decrease the amount of money the state spends on acquisitions of land. So I toss it at you because that might be something you have to deal with in the next, who knows, five years and being able to develop a whole host of tools.
Yes.
You know, conservation easement or something that supplements the value as opposed to let's acquire this asset in perpetuity and, you know, assign its use. That'll be a problem if the solution to the query is a significant decrease in acquisition of lands and there aren't a lot. So I think timing is good. Take a look at all of them. Turn it to us because if you're alive in that one, you may not need to trust it.
Yeah, it's pretty disheartening to see again at the state level these amazing farmlands, farmlands that are in pretty dire need of some sort of solution before being converted to development and how competitive that process is and how little money is currently even available for that. There has to be other tools in the toolbox, absolutely.
So if you're okay with it, make it sound like, who knows, I asked about, you know, how is there any money to be available to come in? So a lot of money.
It's not the amount of just... I'm just curious why only it's 10 hours of work for $4,000, $400 bucks an hour. Like, for me to support that, I'd like to see a contract that explains why it's $100 an hour for a consultant. Kind of a scope of work that maybe limits, maybe a certain hour to maybe up to a certain amount instead of just a blanket $4,000 for 10 hours, but there must be more to it than just that.
Yeah, certainly. It's more than 10 hours of work. That might be the actual meeting time. We've actually talked to a consultant who does work like this and this was a ballpark estimation after a brief conversation, but what we described as three, well, first some initial, as Jen said, sort of going out and forming the task force and then three, perhaps day-long or half-day meetings followed up with his ability to synthesize that information. I really strongly feel like a skilled facilitator would be very valuable in this situation. I myself have led and I know Jen has too enough community input processes that it's really worth our while to pay for somebody who can keep a tight process, who knows what questions to ask, who knows how to lead a group through a decision-making process to come up with a quality document.
Maybe the next step would be a draft contract, get the board, and then the board can move forward with the budget process. Just something, Deanne. Otherwise, it just leaves an impression that this would be a $400 an hour person.
Yes.
That's not the impression. We want to leave for this project.
No, definitely not.
So yeah, I have... Give you a draft contract, move your consultant, move your team, and then bring it back and see.
Oh, that's great. Deanne, also, you know, what do you expect your outcomes to be, you know, obviously the timeline and stuff. Sort of, I'm sure that you can take forward the concept of open to, you know, open to finding a way to fund this and now you can paint the picture.
Yeah, we've got to do that.
I think in our recent attempts to, for these smaller contracts, we've also had certain deliverables marked that were down on the form as measures. So you may want to work with him to kind of make sure it has all the details that the board's asking for on a number of these contracts that we've kind of embarked upon this year.
That's a great, yeah, positive suggestion.
Great.
All right. Well, thank you.
You have a report Angeles for use of airport property for staging of demo car participants.
This is an agreement with the board that you staged for use of airport property for staging demo cars. It's a no-cost option for the county, but big benefits. Working with the board actually over the last few years has been a very good thing. This agreement is coming to you a little later than I hoped because they were waiting on the new director to be appointed before we brought it forward. So now that's done, you're seeing this. This also has gone through the prosecuting attorney's review process, although you don't see a stamp on here. Christina was the one I worked with on this originally. Obviously, she's no longer here, but I have spoken to Brian about it. So if you'd rather see a stamp with prosecuting attorneys manual, I can do that.
We just come back by the time of the 26th. This is a week out.
Right.
We don't do the demo car being part of the fair, so I'm just curious why they don't...
Well, they're a... It's not a fair function. They actually pay us to participate or use the grant.
So this is just a move, trying to move them out of the rodeo area?
Well, no, it's before they get there, actually. It starts, it's only, basically, it's a 24-hour agreement. It starts first thing Sunday morning, the day of, last day of the air, and they stage all their cars. One of the big things that we focus on is the removal of all the hazardous things that could be knocked off there. The president, the glass, all the other things that we don't want in our arena. So they stage the doors there, then they open groups of 10, and we actually look at them again before they hit the arena. So the board allowing us to do this is a huge benefit to us.
That's great. We've been filing for a week.
Thanks. Thank you.
The board is requesting again, would you share permission to sign a research and conservation office application resolution?
This should be familiar with the board at this point. This is for the section of trail that includes the, what they call the daily ranking tunnel. As we've explained before, the trail, the ODT, is fully funded through the road fund through the six-year TIP that you guys have already done for last year as we continue forward. This is one of those instances where the RCO now is willing to, through this agreement, apply some money that that fills what we've already agreed to spend to get the project done in the first place. So this is the infield that we tell you about as we, it's all fully funded, but this is the stuff that comes back that we don't count on because it can possibly not come back in, but it is. So this is a chair of board that signed it, and Rich is here if you have any more detail.
So what kind of, when these stuff grabs a loose?
Do you have that, Rich?
Yeah, we're requesting $624,000 annually. And this resolution will only come into effect if we're awarded the money. So, you know, you're just stating upfront that you support the application for this grant and this resolution only comes into effect if we actually get the grant and you are at that point, sign the contract, which will commit it to this resolution.
And there's a bunch of signs, new signs, something to do with this discovery trail. Let's hold that up.
We've, the Pencil Trails Coalition has for years wanted to sign the trail to get more, you see these bicyclists coming through the county on Highway 101, and that's not the safest place for them to be. A lot of them haven't researched the trail and don't even realize that it's 20 feet away. So literally, this is trying to get those people off the highway. And these signs were especially made for the trailheads, so people that are driving with their bikes and want to access the trail will know where the trailheads are. So we've got 20 signs up throughout the county, all the way out to the far end of Mary Clark Road and all the way to the county line. And they'll be augmented by a county version of these signs that we'll put on county roads that will be more focused on bicycle riders themselves that are riding bikes, not in cars, not looking for trailheads, but on bikes. So we'll try to get them off of the highway also and onto the nearest access point for the trail. So if you have to tell them where it is in order for them to be able to use it, then that's the goal of the Pencil Trails Coalition, which paid for the cost of these signs. We paid for the cost of their installation, the actual signs that were purchased and designed by the Pencil Trails Coalition.
That's right. It's a red flag next week. Continue to wait. It's a red light. In the development, emergency ordinance to establish interim official controls. RCW 5678, 390, charter, reserving rules on the district to limit the size of structures. Welcome.
I just want to apologize to you if you have not heard what you have this.
One of the necessary...
I just wanted to say where this started. I just want to start where this started. Back in this spring of 2015, a realtor came to my office and said, you have the objection to a B and B of $4,000 per feet out of the rule of residential. That's, we don't really have any experience with it, but it's, that's probably, that's okay. I mean, we can't do anything about it. My dad was a good steward. But it seems like, why does anybody need $4,000 per feet? So he said, oh, so it's real exclusive then for breakfast and this lady from California wants to develop it. So I didn't hear from him until January this year, January, February, and they write in pre-application for $16,000 per feet. So he said, well, okay. So it grew to $2,000 per feet. Then about six months later, she turned herself hands for $32,000 per feet. I said, wait a minute, this is $32,000 per feet. This is one to 10, $32,000 per feet. The largest house in the county is $10,000 per feet. A really nice home in the county is $5,000 per feet. An average nice home in the county is $25,000 per feet. And then a house in the residential urban setting is not a residential fee, that's pretty harsh. There's a difference. And our building official has said that this is, it says concrete, steel, glass structure. It's a hotel, but this woman is saying that it's a bed and breakfast and it's got 25 bathrooms. So...
By the way, I think it's important to note here that our regulations for bed and breakfast limit you to five...
Rooms.
Five bedrooms.
Not bedrooms, just rooms.
Just rooms.
Just rooms, five night accommodations.
So this will only have five rooms, but 25 bathrooms, which is...
Right. And then she said, so we're building plans incomplete, and then just a little, we got a letter from an attorney, you know, challenging some of the things that we told her. She doesn't need to pay for building it. And it's one of the top land use attorneys, she's a study in Washington. And so I think you're just kind of getting out of hand. So four things, about two out of hand, it's kind of like time out. And what we're allowed there is that you're ready to do emergency ordinance because if this were going next door, a lot of peaceful rural residential home, I would consider that an emergency. And we talked to the attorneys and they think, you know, emergencies, now they're flying out or an earthquake, which those are huge emergencies, but we do, we allow one of these to go through. Oh, oh, and then that's large. She admits for septic, on-site septic permit, and there's two of these structures on the property.
Each $32,000?
Each $32,000 per feet. Now, I guess, she said her husband snores, so I guess he's going to sleep on it. So anyway, you know, you can call up a kid, I'll be on, but that doesn't make it, you know. So I thought it was an elephant. And this is a hotel, and so that's, so that's what we're asking.
So I am a little concerned, Mary Ellen, that the person is approaching the county and not being straightforward. That's very concerning. But what would happen if she had been straightforward in commitments that, I want to build $32,000 per foot? Build any difference between that process and a bed and breakfast process?
I think that you really have a policy she could do, this really is a commercial bar, store area.
Well, bed and breakfasts are a whole topic. Kirk's certainly in suburban rural areas, they're a six-room commercial. Some of our rural commercial zones would allow motel hotels. Bed and breakfasts are essentially allowed in most of, all of our urban residential zones and all of our, most of our rural residential, rural residential could be one home for five acres, one home for 10 acres, one home for 20. We also have in this swing area in particular, a number of what I would consider rural residential are limited areas, more intensive development and not the commercial, that'd be your rural R1, one year breaker, residential, fully residential, one year for cat behavior, those also all bed and breakfasts. The bed and breakfast standard is supposed to be a single-family dwelling owned by, lived in by the owner and or manager and five or fewer rooms for overnight accommodation for the state veterans. So we're also looking at the building code, which is counting the number of rooms that are actually being rented. So you're typical bed and breakfast that probably would be reflective of most of ODC in this county, that it would be someone's converted partially or fully their single-family home, which might have upwards of five bedrooms, maybe a couple extra for the actual family, but specifically a room with commoners for dining ODC in a typical home. Well, this is being built from start to finish, four floors, one floor dedicated to five rooms, five units, because each unit has not only a bedroom, but looks like a sitting room, at least two, some of them have at least three rooms in the unit. No kitchens yet, but at least two, one to three, two to three rooms in each unit, that's in addition to the bathroom, the closet, unnecessary kind of those. It's a typical home, somebody might want a bedroom with each, so it shouldn't have to be in that. Five more bedrooms up above that for the family, and the lower two floors are going to be dining rooms, dining areas, libraries, chart rooms, theaters, things like that. The guest room also has a dedicated business center, at least on the building plans, dedicated, a couple of the dedicated rooms. If you just look at the dedicated rooms, at least on the plans that we've had today, you're probably talking about 17 or more rooms that are purely targeted to the guests, which contribute to size. So we do have some tools, but bed and breakfasts in our conference plan and in our zoning are allowed in most of now rural and urban residential areas, and the scale factor is essentially the number of rooms and how we apply the building and zoning together. So there are some tools there, but someone could give us more tools to further study this issue and look at other rules, look at community ones in terms of, we can talk a little about the planning mission, but we need more thorough discussions because I don't think people realize scale and how it can impact the neighborhood.
So I came to answer your question. Maybe identify properties that you could build something like this, help protect it by zones and properties that you could do this as a hotel, as what it really is, if she didn't ask for some help with this, we could help with that and maybe get through the process. Or maybe even find properties that, you know, could be rezoned, that are caused, that from the form, she could develop something like this for that. So we could work with her, but, you know, you don't, it's not honest. This is what you can have.
And that's the beginning of the relationship.
Right.
Had she put in a paperwork, permanent application for hotels, same as...
Right. You can do that.
You cannot just have them alone, use...
No, I do.
Okay, there's the issue then. Or additional ones.
It is, yeah.
It would not have been allowed under our current rules.
Motels, hotels are not allowed in, that's all in all other rural, in both, in rural, rural residential areas. Some of our commercial, rural commercial, we're allowed hotels, but not in the rural and rural residential areas.
And have you had the chance to talk to anybody that's in that neighborhood before this has been reported?
That's all you can do.
And so can you, that's a good segue into what, how would you like to use this 60-day period? What do you hope to gain from that?
More information and understanding if people want such properties in the rural residential area.
Right, so there would be some outreach to neighbors during this time. Are there, are there resource concerns that you, that your office has with regard to water usage or aesthetic impacts or traffic concerns or anything like that, or is that also part of the need for having some more time to study the issues? Okay.
So this might be a good time, I don't know if Brian's here, to specifically talk about this, but I know I did talk with, with Mary Ellen about getting, and she briefly touched on it, having some discussion with, with legal counsel, with the prosecutor's office on what risks do we have if we, while we don't have a lawful permit, because she hasn't paid the money and applied for the permit yet, and if she had, if this woman had, we couldn't, doing this emergency ordinance would have no consequence on her, she'd be grandfathered in. So this would stop her for 60 days, giving time to, to move through this process a little bit, as we're saying. But you're doing it on an emergency ordinance, back-to-back, today and tomorrow, and there's some issues with the possibility that that exposes us to the potential for lawsuits. I don't know. Are you here to talk about that, Brian?
No, I'm not. The chief civil was lead on this matter.
Okay. So I, there is some concern, and Mary Ellen and I talked about this a little bit, and she expressed to me some of the comments that she heard from David Alvarez. There is some concern that if we don't do it back-to-back and immediately, she'll pay her money and then we can't stop her. And if we do, her land use attorney could follow through on the implied threat, be better not try and stop this because your rules don't prevent us from building this this way. We could be, have some legal exposure there too. So it's a, this is a decision that only the legislative body can make. Our charter does allow you to do emergency ordinances, as you see in the first paragraph on the, under the ordinance, where it says, "The charter does allow the board to pass an ordinance to meet a public emergency affecting life, health, property, or the public peace, provided that such an emergency ordinance shall in a separate section state the facts creating emergency." So the issue is, is this the definition of an emergency affecting life, health, property, or the public peace? And clearly, Mary Ellen believes that is true, both, I think there's our discussion both on property and public peace. And I think legal counsel is a little less sure that that really meets the bar. Is that fair?
Fair, you can see you want to talk on that. Talk to you down.
Well, I can't, I can't fill in links with the, we lawyers would want, kind of lawyers of boards to probably be concerned about that, take that straight from the developer remark on that. I can just give, maybe a little historical presence, I probably used emergency police from community development. So last time we did an emergency ordinance was when we had the rural court decision in Carroll'sburg in our rural lands, and we did use initially a emergency ordinance, basically put some freezes in Carroll'sburg, some in rural areas, and we followed that process up with a public hearing within 60 days. And then started interim controls, and we worked through those, and we were talking about a lot of issues. So if it would be a hearing, emergency ordinance, it would be deemed that is called by number one would sunset on the 61st day unless it was a public hearing with either modified or extended. The growth management act does allow for interim, some interim official controls, moratoriums very similarly, and that the county board, the city council can establish without a public hearing interim controls for 60 days, but they have to hold a hearing within 60 days and then establish a paperwork program and move forward. So the reason we, I believe, why we do it through an emergency here is of our formal charter, any ordinance the board adopts is both a hearing with at least a minimum 10 days, and it's not effective for 10 days later. So that's a little different than the economy that might use the growth management tools to say, we need to get something in place and have a hearing within 60 days. So they kind of are similar, but different, as you'd be declaring as an emergency. So we did, we did use that back then when with the issue of non-compliance and invalidity.
We used our growth management tools as soon as that we could, you know, say we can't do the $1,000 per feet. When would that be? Two days? See, that actually was doing some of like covering this with two days, or is it two days?
Well, if you're doing a regular ordinance with, you're just, do a true process, we'd start the planning, but even as a growth parent, you can, if you're thinking to get a interim control in place or moratorium, you can go directly in the board and do that. The difference being, if you're going to do a public hearing on a regular ordinance or interim control, you have to have at least a minimum 10 days notice.
We always guarantee...
And the board is not effective for 10 days after that minimum. So that's, that's the time lag. That's the difference. So if it's something that's an emergency, you want to get a place or in place, that's the two we've got.
So if a facility is built, our existing rules about bed and breakfast, which limits to five, now it's a year later, it's all destructive, and the person has plus one to five. What's the...
Code of Justice.
And what does that cost? Looking at it commercially, and I'm saying to myself, well, let me compare the cost of a tear with...
Five.
But really, do you...
And I mean, we saw how difficult it was to take down the floor and get square footage structure, that's about 17 years ago. Can you imagine, $32,000 per foot? And if people next door want to sell their piece of property because they don't have limits to a hotel, they can't sell it for what they're selling the building for, that property is still. So, so I don't know. I mean, seems like...
Because there might be something that will happen during the 60 days.
Okay.
Because our current rules actually make it financially attractive to call it a bed and breakfast, and it's really a hotel, knowing that when you come in and say it's a hotel, you're going to say, come on, where do I owe you? And your answer's going to be, you don't have anything in any compliance ordinance?
Only $2,000.
$2,000? You see where I'm going with it, though? The cost of compliance, maybe there's a need for us to take a second look at that.
Can't you just say no under our current bed and breakfast ordinance? You just told me there's 17 rooms that you've already saved, and you just say when they, when they do file the permits, sorry, this isn't a bed and breakfast, it's a hotel?
That's the standard we've been taking with the outender's point, whether, and I think we do have some strong arguments based on the design that always doesn't fit the building and zoning, but it might not be a solid argument, certainly if it was appealed on the zoning side. A bed and breakfast, what is clear, if it's not a bed and breakfast, zoning code is pretty clear, and it's not a bed and breakfast, it's a hotel hotel.
I think Alvarez said that it's not good to use your building code to strengthen your landing codes, and that's what we're trying to tackle, because we also don't have any landing codes to give them. So, so yeah, we've got that, it's not, his mind's not just on that. Thanks.
What if the reward for bed and breakfast is completely embedded and attached to this with, someone, we're just coming forward with a proposal for $32,000 per foot, same type of residence?
That would be allowed. None of our residential zones in the county, they're successful, they still have that, particularly in the rural areas, where they don't have public water or public sewer, they're going to have to be able to show there, they have a primary and a reserve area on-site or they can get one through a piece of offsite or septic, they're going to have to secure the amount of water and groundwater in the county, in private critical areas and sure by the critical areas and shore on those, but zoning itself does not currently regulate the size of the septic or septic or how it is.
I mean, this is some public acres, I mean, this is a, this is two and a half acres, two, two and a half acres. I mean, um, the PBD building is twenty-nine thousand square feet, this is thirty-two. So it's like, so do you need one property that has a longer structure? That's another thing that we could look at too, and I mean, is it, is it out, is it a conglomerate? You know, to impact it, I'm asking. So, no, there's not even, it's something we have to look at. Maybe, you know, some of these, uh, could burn in areas, you know, that'll do a lot of coverage, but maybe, or so many acres should get some of this per week, so acres, so it's not on scale. And if that would have to set, sort of, a lot of this is on the state.
What are the stormwater management rules for this zone and this type of project?
Do you agree on this one?
They definitely require an interior management, different scale. Uh, right now, they're, uh, needing more information. They're, I think they're attempting to try to stay more than two hundred feet from the ordinary water mark. What's the significance of that? If they're, if they're close enough to two hundred feet, then they're also entered the shoreline asset program. And actually, the shoreline asset program would consider what they're proposing at, at more than, uh, five, more than six floor buildings and whole as a, as a commercial, as a commercial standards. Uh, the reason why that's, that's an issue, their, their, their site plan is showing it being measured from the main high water, which can be more water, where we got a return to them in the field, so that, that true. But if, if they want to truly stay out of shoreline, they might have a little more room. But this is why it's all important, they got to fit this, uh, with the septic and the reserve. It is tied to the other lot that they own that's two and a half acres. That's where they're proposing to put the septic and reserve drainage field, and they're looking at making application for a group bay water system that would presumably serve a full cross. Uh, this kind of shore being engineered, uh, it's close to the bay, we're looking at that from water quality, quantity. Uh, there are some erodible loss notice, see this other areas that are on, on, on that particular property. The emergency control zone, that in forty, we're not just applied to this zone, this one is, it applies to essentially all other rural lands and rural residential, uh, landers. It's, that would be, we try to prevent other things in these things to figure out what, if you're, if you're on control, it's a good sign.
So if they didn't come in and said, "I recognize in your current zone that it cannot have water for the spot that they want to do this," so I would like to add a variance. Talk, talk to me about what would occur?
You can add the variance from, from the social uses prohibited, if you can't get a zoning variance from that. You can get zoning variances for both a dimension, so setbacks, or, um, some of our zones do have building sites that are commercial for heights, and you can get variances from that, you can't get a variance from, uh, somebody's, somebody's experience.
So they have to initiate a process to re-zoom?
That's correct, rezoning in that particular site. Hey, that particular site is a, one of our, what are called the remnant rural, our two zones, which were deemed invalid, because of the density one, two point four. We replaced most of that zoning with the neighborhood conservation, rural neighborhood conservation. But there are some, our two areas that we're able to, uh, retain as a appropriate density, but also some of that the, uh, close to the, uh, Dundas Bay, and this particular site, that's a couple lots. And, uh, but converting that from a rural residential to a rural commercial, in my opinion, would not be supportive in the county, so we would, and we were challenging to lose. Because there's, one of the key things with rural commercials, you have to show it's consistent with the, you know, quote, size scale or intensity of these that were in place in nineteen ninety. So there was no large scale thirty thousand square foot commercial or anything close to that. It'd be hard, it'd be hard for us to say, "Create this as a new rural commercial," whatever, on a school bay or otherwise. So we got to look at the test. And we did a lot of that work initially in nineteen ninety-five, and we did it again with the challenges, and we find the other boundaries of those rural commercial areas that I can afford to come in. So I don't think you could get, I might not recommend that, these own commercial.
So really, we're dealing with a pretty decent lawyer. This looked a little, is it unlovable?
Um, I don't know if it's lovable, yeah, but, uh, certainly the...
Just limited, yes.
Limited. Do I have them under contract at hearings, or?
Yes.
Is that a resource you'd consider reaching out to? Are there other examples of this in Washington State?
We talked about, um, I mean, we just want the time to research it, so it might, it could end up being...
Oh, you're hearing the research, if you're kind of, which way to go?
Okay.
Looking at.
The hearing examiner is operating in private additional. Certainly, if an appeal on how we apply the current code was not afforded. When you start with a hearing examiner on a building code that would order the board of appeals. Uh, so, in terms of just going to the hearing examiner and asking for advice, I don't think that would be appropriate. But I think it's my consult with legal on that.
You could reach out to someone else, you know, the county's attorney.
Yeah, same idea, I mean, how other counties deal with this? Last question from the audience.
Uh, if I could, thank you very much. Um, first of all, I apologize, this comes from a real estate lawyer. You should run this past counsel. You don't have a legal fight, you can avoid it. Um, second question is, uh, if this ordinance goes into place, will it stop all other rural construction, or is it only on this one property?
All other for two months, just two months while we can study it.
Oh, more than ten thousand feet? It will stop anything shorter than, smaller than ten thousand feet?
And the largest house in the county is ten thousand square feet, so the life of it in two months, that's...
So, and so over ten thousand square feet, is that only in our rural area, or is that county-wide area where? One of your correspondents?
Uh, we have the State Attorney at one at one one. Um, tomorrow, Ward Health at one thirty. Here and Kaila, we have twenty-first Thursday. Next week, we have, um, at one o'clock on Monday, the State Attorney's conference. And then on Tuesday, at three, we have the Board of Superior for a poll.
And with the State Attorney, so it's usually you, your staff, and, and sometimes the commissioner sits in, sometimes not, but we don't have more than one, so...
But not more than one.
If only you want to sit in, that's great, but we can't have more than one. Otherwise, I have to notice that it's a special meeting. It's usually for Jim and his staff.
I, I don't know my calendar looks like, I'd be happy to attend if you'd like to, and I'm happy not to.
You're welcome. I have a bench one, so if you wanted to go, great.
Well, why don't we, uh, take what our calendars have the meeting to decide this call. One of the other episodes will be there.
You're good. Whoever goes to the entrance, they should go to the exit. And if the others on calendar for the next two weeks?
Fifty-five to back down. Bill's here.
So, put Bill in the email list for the meeting date coming in place.
Yes.
Correspondents?
I have a question, um, we have correspondence, there was a letter brought in from very carefully that. Uh, Clay Valley Cars and Rex sent a letter in regarding two issues that they're having with the Public Center out in Florida. Um, a lot of the administration, we've sent a reminder of their, um, annual breakfast, that's in Seattle on September twenty-ninth, and they're, um, requesting R S V Ps at the base interest in margin. We also had a notice of hearing that was delivered for July twenty-second with Dale Wilson and, uh, all of them. Uh, Colm Transit posted a notice for a meeting on Monday, August fifteenth, right after the board meeting, um, for their, um, review of their government, their...
So I actually turned that over to Trish. There's actually a process that I think the board has to go through. I think it'll end up with one of you being appointed. It's the annual, I think it's a, every decade, transit has to review from the governing bodies whether they should maintain the transit system or not. So, since you guys both serve on, we'll figure that out. Trish will work with Mary about, and figure out what the solution would be.
Great.
Uh, there was a letter that was faxed over from Stephen Richam in regards to everything for apartments, um, some allegations going through with, uh, units.
So is that earlier code enforcement? Do we know?
Uh, I'm not sure, I'll double check on that.
You know, the code enforcement issue almost exists.
I'll double check on that.
Is that in town, or?
Yeah, it's in, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's in town.
Um, we had correspondence that was, um, emailed over for the Colm County Fair. Everybody was eating coffee early this morning, so there were, um, many attachments for when you guys would like to participate, or announcements at the fair. So if you basically have to know which ones you love to do. And then also on the back, there were attachments of shirts, of the size of where you want. And they'd like us to respond to that, because the shirts are all fast. And then the last one I have is, uh, Christopher, uh, Christopher Shea, we probably are going to follow up this as well, further by the tree committee, and the local business services. They, um, had a letter that we received to, um, consider Chris to be on the, or if this may be as well.
And that's item nine on today's agenda.
Yeah.
Is he asleep, wasn't he?
Yes. Oh, also, one, I had one other item on, uh, calendar, just a reminder. I noticed we have, we don't have it in the future agenda thing, but next Monday, the twenty-fifth, is actually our joint meeting with the Port Angeles Board here. We'll have a sketch, what we're planning to do is have our regular, uh, work session from nine until ten, maybe quarter till ten, take a break, have a joint meeting with them at ten o'clock until eleven-thirty, and then come back if we, depending on what our items are, after eleven-thirty. And we'll have, I think there's four items that we mutually agreed on that would be on the direct agenda for a joint meeting.
Any ideas?
I don't remember off the top of my head, I got them, but some things that we're both jointly doing. Um, I know we're going to get the, the CRTC is going to make a, is going to make an updated presentation. And we're going to talk about the RC and D, um, and, uh, some opportunities we have jointly to do, to do some, uh, grant requests and something on the air, because I don't know.
I, I got that, we'll, we've been back and forth in the morning. Great.
Nine with Department of Health and Funding for Recreational Shellfish Program, H I B Client Services, WIC funding market activity and available hardware software for the group eight. That's all. Perfect. Yeah. More. Uh, so, for those who don't quite understand, at the CONCON, Department of Health contracts, it's kind of like an original contract that is drawn up in this one. I think the master contract is from twenty fifteen, and then every so often amendments come through when they add additional funding, uh, for you far beyond all activities. And so that's what we're looking for right now, is amendment one. So this amendment has funding to continue our case management of H I B patient services. That's ninety-six thousand dollars, runs through the rest of this year. Uh, we also contract with, uh, DOH to provide standard surveys of select public water systems. I'll usually do between eight and twelve a year, plus provide technical assistance. Um, so we are going to continue that. Uh, the, um, the shellfish program, what we're talking about this particular time on shellfish is the phyotoxic program, which is also known as Red Tide. So we have, uh, sample containers in different areas of the county, and either staff, volunteer, uh, take mussels out of these cages that we have and send them on to Department of Health. They do the testing, we get results back. And if things are good, you know, um, uh, DOH maintains a map, where people can get online and, and realize, okay, these beaches are open. If, if things are closed, we usually get the notification out that. And they'll put out a press release of beaches being closed. And, um, and occasionally we can get out and post signs, make sure that they should be harvested shellfish. Uh, we also coordinate a volunteer program to help us with that. So that is the, um, the, the shellfish phyotoxic program. And, uh, for WIC, um, it's, it seems like it's, uh, kind of a very concentrated timeline of between June and September, uh, folks who are WIC clients can go to farmers markets and get certain, certain products that they can use towards the WIC program and get reimbursed through this, um, amendment. Uh, how, how the figure of three ninety-five came up, I'm, I'm not sure. I'd have to ask him how, how that, that figure came, that's what they're having to do with the contract. So those are the elements, this is kind of my...
How, how does the level of additional funding here relate to what you had hoped for in this meeting?
I think for the most part, we had already, um, planned for this funding, it ended up coming, but...
So it's still...
So do we put any money in in order to get the monies that they're giving us?
Uh, we get reimbursed from the Department of Health for this.
So this is a, this is actually a contract, not a grant. So we do work, they reimburse us for the money. And this is the statement work that they anticipate for this additional fifty-one thousand, nine twenty-nine, what we're already contracting for. So it's a match on this one.
We don't have to hire anybody or any other cost expense? And do we get to carry any of it to next year, if we don't use it?
Uh, they'll, they'll develop another amendment for next year, add money.
So yes and no.
Yes and no.
We'll know at the time of the budget what hasn't been spent, or what we don't anticipate spending, and then at the end of the year, or slightly after the end of the year, it always comes too late for budget. They'll give us a new contract for the, to carry over the monies. In, in my time here, they've never taken anything in. They just sometimes miss slow in giving us the contract amendment for the profit.
I just came to the WIC program, I like the idea, but it's a, it's a short window.
They, uh, in the contract, they talk about, um, for this particular task, it goes, um, through those, those months of June and September, and it's eligible, let's see, this goes back to twenty fifteen, so June, September twenty fifteen, sixteen, June, September twenty seventeen. So it's already covered for next year.
And this is a pretty established program that I think the staff has just incorporated to their annual work plan. They're basically just giving vouchers, like, like two dollar vouchers, which women mothers can give, uh, exchange for two dollars worth of produce at farmers markets. And then the farmers, uh, collect those and turn them into their bank, just like cash. It's pretty straightforward, everybody wins.
Thank you. For the file for next week. Washington Department of Natural Resources to provide surveys and control of non-just weeds and... weeds in selected area.
Good morning. So this is in essence a contract or an agreement with the Department of Natural Resources to do work primarily, we're working out in the West End and Sola in cooperation with National Park and Quilie Track to do efforts to control non-just weeds. So that's mainly what that was about. And they, as I said, for me doing this work, we support.
Is it common for other agencies to contract with you and with our organization or system?
We've done work with them before and that's what they wanted to have us do with the Pugil. And they said, we have more money, we've been helped with our crews before, oversight or hooked them up with a project that was already in action. So they said, can you guys do this stuff? And I said, we really need to work out the rest and the support that's coming up there. So yes and no. Yes.
And how does taking on additional work like this impact your, how does this build into the rest of your workload?
So we have seasonal crew that we hired over the summer budget for that. And that's usually doing four service workers. And this year we had a little less money as NOS funds go down. It's really hard to hire seasonal crew, get them trained in just for just a month of work. So what we're going to do is right now, we're just starting to switch to not wheat work. And so they'll, they'll do more not wheat work and less farm service work. So it's just kind of filling a gap that appeared and then I could hire some more seasonals to make that, that happen. So we already budgeted for it. We were never really sure how that money's going to play out. And so that's why it says we will add more if we didn't budget enough, but I think we have so.
And it's reimbursed contract. So, so we give the money back after we've done the work and submitted the invoices.
Right, DNR, so did you do like $20,000 for the project?
For this particular thing, yes. We, we've actually had a more detailed program at the board. We were overseeing several WCC crews in different counties. They had us because of focal point. And so we were training, we were overseeing, laying out the projects, doing all those things. And so this is just another kind of iteration of that relationship that we established with them in other places.
Jill Silver's got a program where she's doing some work on the West End. Actually appreciate the opportunity for people to get a job. Is it the same folks or is it a different group of people that you're working with?
So we're, this one is from Aquatic Land, so it's primarily in my paring area. So the beauty of this money is that the not wheat money is only for not wheat. This they can treat, if they find 10 square feet of something that's just invading an area, they can treat that too. It's not like you can only use it for not wheat, which has been a little bit of a bugger for folks. It's like, well, there's just a little, why can't we get that? So it's different, she's going to be doing some of that work in different areas, but this is primarily a gap that has appeared in trying to help Quilie in some very usual customary areas and where it boundaries, boundaries with the National Park. It's kind of an area that has been a no man's land that no one was taking jurisdiction for and yet it needed some work. So that's what, that's why we put it in that area.
I appreciate your courage to step into no man's land because I understand administrations challenging.
They're all going to be out there working together. And that's what's really cool is being able to facilitate that coordinated teamwork versus no, you can't step here or it's like, let's just get the job done. So that's kind of work. We'll bring some crew, we'll make it happen. So that's primarily where that's happening. You know, I answered your question.
I, you know, I have another question. Knowing how many people in the county are, are sensitive to the use of herbicides and whatnot, how, how much ability do we have to announce ahead of time where, where you're going to be treating and at what time so that, you know, how much information can we get out ahead of time to keep people informed?
So in a lot of cases, this is in town private land. This is where we've received a landlord who wants us to get, take care of it on the property, made boundaries areas. And that's primarily why we've gotten involved is because treating in a riparian area is really complicated. So we, we're not making anybody do it. They, they send us a permission to come on their property and do the work. Or we're doing it on DNR land. So we have, there's all sorts of posting requirements that are required with ag and under the permits that we use. So the answer's complicated on someone's private land, we don't necessarily notify somebody else. They've asked us to come and take care of it for them in a difficult area. So we post in advance the notice. There's a whole series of guidelines that we have to follow for anything that someone, that the idea is that if someone might, might come in contact with it, there's ways that they know and can avoid contact that might be adverse. So we always follow those posting requirements and they're complicated. But on private property land, we're not exposing anybody else on someone's private property. I hope that answers that question. This is a little bit different from a roadside ride.
And you posted on SWEAT though, didn't you?
Absolutely.
You know, if I'm out there hunting or if I'm walking through that area, I can be notified.
And most private property owners wouldn't like you walking on their property. So that's what we, we always call them saying, we're coming out to your area. And we always ask for any special conditions, like close the gate if you're going through our cows or whatever. So we have, we notify them in advance when we're coming so that they have these special concerns or other things they want us to know. We mark them all with a ribbon, please come and take care of those. So we're in contact with those landlords.
So the Department of Natural Resources provides funding, which then can be used to benefit individual landowners?
This is a, this is a really interesting development that happened a number of years ago where they recognized the potential for these private lands to impact public lands. And so it really is where the landlord really couldn't do the treatment themselves. And so it's benefiting public lands because they're the source to contaminate all the public lands. And that's legislature wrestling with that issue. And they realized that there's the impact of private on the public. So it's not benefiting the private landlord per se, it's benefiting public lands by ensuring that they don't become part of the problem. So it's a if, you're right. Sounds weird, but.
So you conducted a meeting last week in Forks, I wish I could have attended. Can you give us some feedback on what you did?
The Forks one went really well. We, we didn't have anyone that had particular concerns that we hadn't identified already. Got a lot of really interesting feedback. We, we conducted one in Squid, as well, in Port Angeles, and Tricia Ozias was able to lead the Squid one. We'll be coalescing, we, we receive questions and we'll be writing written responses to those and getting those back out to people that asked for that information via email. We'll provide it to the commissioners and I'll set up a date when we can come and brief you on the results as we've sit through those evaluations for. So had a lot of really good discussions. People, there were, we had about 60 over 60 people attend three workshops, which, you know, not a huge turnout, but I think it was good and we got good feedback and we had lots of people there to discuss concerns and questions. And so we're always open. We'll be posting, I think the third one may have gotten recorded and we'll try and post that. The state did that and we're hoping that there's a link that you can post to so people can see what we presented. And we'll be putting up more information from those workshops on our website. So we'll be getting back to with more information about how we went and then see what our next step will be.
Now, feedback from Forks or you is that people actually felt very comfortable, could get a straight answer to this great question. Do you want that?
And I think I have the next item also, so.
Uses are a file item for consideration next Tuesday?
Do you mean to come to the Tuesday meeting to, for that commission meeting on Tuesday when this is?
Number one with the Washington State Department of Agriculture to increase some of the non-weat control activities described in the case 1735.
So this is just additional funds that they found that they wanted to give to us to a contract or a grant that's already in place.
Is that because other counties didn't use their money or something?
I think it was an outcome of the final legislature budget and we had asked for a little bit more funding. And again, it was kind of this gap that appeared. We also do some other services like put on training programs that they really like to see happen. And so they said, we have this money, would you use it? I guess we can. And so I said, we like what you're doing, here's the, so that's essentially what happened.
Yeah, I'm ready for that for next Tuesday.
Thank you very much.
Follow-up County Agricultural Commission requests $4,000 for facilitator bringing together a community-based task force, develop a commission for the future of agriculture.
Good morning. Thank you. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Jennifer Bond and I am a farmer at East Cloud County and I chair the ag commission in my spare time in the planner of the conservation district. I've been there for the past 15 years, so I think you guys have met me before from time to time. And what we want to talk about today is an idea that came out of the ag commission to develop just a one to two page, very brief position paper that kind of summarizes the future and our goals for ag in Clough County. And so CLIA, with WSU Extension, has been helping us kind of brainstorm and come up with an idea of where we are so far. We have this idea to get a group of volunteers together, farmers, business owners, those that have an interest in ag. And we, over the summer, just a couple of brief meetings and the goal of those meetings will be to develop a, a position paper that kind of represents collectively where we are with the future of ag in our county. And we'll find out later when Tricia can provide some more details.
Sure. The County Comprehensive Plan has some really good and strong language about ag and the value of ag in our county. It seems like in hearing from other community organizations and the discussion that's been happening at the ag commission, there's a, the time is ripe for reinvigorating the discussion around the, the value of ag in our community, where we go in the future to ensure the viability of it and to really bring a community conversation around that, around this together. One perspective I will add is that I sit on the state recreation and conservation office's farmland protection grant review committee. So I have the opportunity to, we're in the grant review process right now and there's a team of us of about 15 or 20 people. And we hear presentation after presentation after presentation from people all over the state, primarily from other counties, county governments coming to do their presentation about the, the applications they're putting forward for these amazing farmland protection programs. And it's given me a pretty interesting perspective on where other counties and county governments are in terms of their ag protection strategies. As I said, oftentimes the people coming forward are from county governments putting forward a request for this money. In our case, Noel has submitted an application this year, but they, they really struggle to get grant matching funds for this program in this area. And because the cost of farmland in our area is so high, it's a, it's a tough competition. So we, we really think, like I said, in talking with the ag commission and others, that there may be real value in bringing a collective group of stakeholders together at this time to, to reinvigorate the conversation about how we ensure that ag remains viable in our county for the next, for the future.
Can you tell us a little bit about what was the state of agriculture in the county and about what part of our economy is it? How many people work in agriculture? What's the mix of small farms to big farms, et cetera?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about that. The 2012 Ag Census is the most information that we have about that. And that's really a 30,000 plus view of ag. It does provide some statistics, like there's 540 farms in Clough County right now. And they use the definition of the USDA, what is a farm? And that means simply that you have, you are producing or have the potential to produce $1,000 worth of agricultural products in a year. So frankly, that's a pretty low bar, you know? If I had more time to spend on my home garden, I could probably get it up to a thousand bucks worth of produce if I really tried. So yeah, so the definition of farm is a little loosey-goosey for that. So 540 farms is a big wide net. About 80% of those farms make less than $10,000 a year in farm-related income. So obviously, and this is true across the country, that the vast majority of farms can't sustain a farm just by being a farm or in rare cases, you know, you have to get to a certain threshold before it can be your primary income. Most people have other, other incomes as farmers outside, off the farm. As far as the, the farm economy in Clough County, I wish Commissioner Ozias that I could answer that question with some accurate numbers, but we don't have a lot of that data. Actually at WSU, we've been working to secure funding to do a study to really understand the impacts of the, of the farm economy in Clough County. Suffice it to say, say that there's been a lot of changes in the past decade with ag, new innovations, small farms are more viable than ever, there's new potential for infrastructure to support meat processing, ag tourism is thriving, as you know, there's just the lavender fest this last weekend. I haven't heard the numbers on that yet, but you know, it's, the state of ag is good and we want it to remain good. And I think it's an important time to bring the community together to have this conversation.
I can give you data or I can show you where to get it yourself on the, on the state's website. That will be generally two years behind. It shows the number of people in the official working in agriculture data. Obviously, this is one of those areas where there's a lot of people that don't pay, essentially, you know, that are kind of the unofficial workers. But we have good historical data, the state that is in, I once in a while, how much a year, give an update to the commissioners on the, on the state of all employment and ag is one section of that. But I've got that, do you?
So if we were to develop and, or the, the committee were to do this work and develop an ag plan or vision for the county, then what happens with that? What's the next step?
I would, I would look at it as an opportunity to spark a larger conversation, to bring a group together, to really identify some primaries, hopefully action items that we can really use collectively, organization by organization or entity by entity to go forward and, and really move on some action items like I would anticipate, you know, finding, having more data on what is the, the farm landscape in Clough County. Just as an example, back in 2006, the county gave the, was it 2006, the Conservation District? Money to actually go out and do a windshield survey of farms across Clough County. And Jen personally drove every single road in the county and we had a, I was working the district too, and we had a form that we filled out. And that's our most recent and, and thorough, or yeah, detailed data about what farms are out there, who has farm stands, you know, how many livestock do we have from a window perspective?
And that data is 10 years old.
It's 10 years old. Lots, lots has changed.
Yes, changed the time.
So that would be a, you know, that might be an action item that could come out of this, this discussion about how, how do we get the data that we actually need to understand farming? Are we covering all our bases in terms of farmland protection and some of the new innovative farmland protection tools that are developing through land trusts across the country? That kind of thing. I, I look at, to answer your question, and I think Jen, you agree, as the beginning of a larger conversation.
Since this is totally new spending in the budget, this would require, per our policies, a debatable emergency hearing, but we wanted to have the opportunity to discuss it with the commissioners to see if you, if you wanted to support this money out of the general fund and before we noted those things up and went down that path.
What, if, if, if we were able to reconstitute this committee, how would you recruit members to ensure that there was adequate representation from all corners of the county?
Yeah, that's a great question. With the ag commission, you know, the beauty of it is it's made up of local farmers. So us farmers would be reaching out to farmers in our area, farmers we know, inviting them. And then also relying on like North Olympic Land Trust who has a long history of working with farms in the area for them, you know, their input as to who should be on this. with farms in the area, for them, you know, their input as to who should be on this committee. WSU Extension has amazing contacts with businesses throughout the county as well, farm and ag-led businesses. And so I feel like between multiple groups, the conservation district as well, who has a long history of working with farmers in the area, I'm very confident that we can get a nice representation, but include, I'm sure, press releases and information on websites. And you know, we want to get as, you know, as a diverse group as possible at these meetings.
And we've also had the discussion that we want to keep this really focused and really tight, a short, tight process. Again, to initiate a conversation, come up with an articulated and shared vision and action steps. Again, going back to that grant review committee, every single county that came forward could point to an ag strategy, ag protection strategy that they had, you know, that said, our goal is to protect X amount of acres over the next few decades, or whatever their goals are as a county. It became pretty clear to me that we have some work to do in this area in that respect in updating some of our goals and our vision for what we would like ag to be in the coming decades.
So when you talk about ag protection, how much of that is preventing conversion of the landers?
I think a huge portion of it, definitely. You know, it's sort of a three-legged stool that I look at. You have to have a significant working land base, you have to have viable economies for small-scale farms, and infrastructure that supports that, and you have to have farmers to farm the land. And in our county, the average age of farm, and across the country, the average age of farmers is, don't have an exact number for Clown, but I believe it's above sixty years old. Many of our farmers are older and getting near retirement. Land succession, land succession becomes a big issue. How do you ensure that this stays in farmland and gets transferred successfully to the next generation? As part of that puzzle, as part of that three-legged puzzle, we have a beginning farmer internship program that we started, we're in our second season, where we're really trying to foster farmer, beginning farmers in the area and keep them in the community. I think it's a, it's a multi-layered strategy.
But the real issue is compensating that existing farm for fair market value, when in reality, the use of the land is just a farm, is a lesser value. Am I understanding correctly?
Yeah, certainly. And the North Olympic Land Trust has a whole toolbox of ways that they can help farmers accomplish that. I think the challenge is funding. Where do those funds come from? They're highly competitive, so we have some work to do in that area.
And this strategy paper would help support those future funding proposals. It just shows that this county is on board, that ag protection's important to us, and just makes these different groups, like the land trust who are moving forward with grant applications, give them a little more support locally for what they're trying to do.
I can tell you guys that this is a subject I've been engaged in in one way or another for ten or more years. And I really like the idea that we've got the potential to do some planning. I think that that's what has been lacking, and we don't have to look very far, and we got the back of our family in Exeter, Jefferson County, to see what can come from spending a little bit of time and effort and money to put a plan and a vision together. And I think if we're able to do that, then that is an excellent step toward helping to, helping to plan for and secure the future of agriculture in our county. You know, it's not that we don't have great farmers, you know, we do, we just don't have a plan, we don't have any organization, there's no way, there's no infrastructure for communication in place, and that's why we don't have the same level of diversity that our next-door neighbors and the counties have. So I would be in favor of finding a way to fund this personally.
To sit here and initially share with you, I'm picking up on feedback out of Olympia that a way to deal with the McCleary decision.